... is roll call. We, members present, we have Brian, myself, Myrta, Gwen, John DeBary, Jesse, Julie Merritt, and Michelle. Is there any public comment on items not listed on the agenda? Okay, we have one regular agenda item. This is a timely item that we needed to take up to keep this project on track. John Wilson's here to present the item. It's a professional services amendment with, agreement amendment with WGM, and I'll let John introduce it.
Thank you for coming out a little early tonight to help us keep this moving. What we have for you tonight is a professional services contract amendment. These are services related to our Scott Street Water Main Installation Project, and these are for environmental-related services for contaminated soil characterization and handling. It's at the site of the old white, what was that called, the White Pine Sash cleanup several years ago, so these are some special requirements to be sure as we go in here and disturb any soil that we do it properly and inspect it and report to DEQ accordingly. We had an original contract in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and twelve. Although this is a relatively small contract, it brings the amendment, it brings the contract above that threshold for council consideration. So we have a contract amount not to exceed sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars with WGM for services related to soil handling and testing for this project. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. For the record, Heidi is here. Are there any questions? John?
Is the soil, is, I'm trying to figure out what the end game is in terms of, is the soil going to be removed from the site or treated there, or is there, what's the plan for all of that?
You know, I don't know in detail, but, or, I do know that in some areas, we won't be in contaminated soil, and they'll be testing to confirm that. Other places, we may find we have to remove some. If we do the, you know, proper containment and handling, they'll oversee that as well. But there won't be large amounts of soil that'll need to be removed that I'm aware of.
Okay. Further questions? Brian?
John, do you know more specifically where along Scott Street this is, is it multiple spots or one spot?
No, if you look on the next to last page of the packet for this, it shows a relatively black and white photo, shows a yellow line coming down Scott and then from north to south, and then it turns west at the north edge of that park.
Ah, yes.
And then goes down through the city shops. That's the route of the water main. And where we might expect to find contaminated soils along that east-west leg of the alignment.
Okay. Okay, I'd entertain a motion. Or any additional questions? Brian?
I'll make the recommended motion.
Okay, that motion is in order. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Okay, all those in favor of the agreement amendment, please say aye. Aye. And opposed, no. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for the record, I'm abstaining.
Okay. So we'll note that in the record, and the motion passes. And Ms. Raybine, this has to go under committee reports, correct?
We've got it on.
Okay, good. So we'll do that, and we'll be adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
(inaudible) 2018 to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have minutes of the, I'm sorry, I got flustered. All council members are present this evening, except Ms. Anderson. We have minutes of the meeting of April ninth. Without objection, they'll be approved. All right, we'll move on to our scheduled committee meetings. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks, Merengen. So, top of the schedule this evening is a meeting that already took place. We had a Public Works Committee meeting right prior to the council meeting tonight at 6:40. The rest of the meetings are this Wednesday, the 18th of April. We're gonna start off that morning with Administration and Finance at 9:05 in the morning, and that meeting will go till 9:20. Budget Committee will go from 9:25 to 9:55. Land Use and Planning Committee will follow from 10:00 AM to 11:25. Committee of the Whole will meet from 11:30 to 1:30. And Public Works Committee will meet from 2:00 to 2:50. And then, next week, on the 23rd, the Committee of the Whole will meet from 10:00 in the morning until 2:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any changes to the committee schedule? Seeing none of those, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening.
Mark McMillan, Ward 6. He's getting lazy here. "A friend and neighbor on March 1 received a nine-page document from the city of Missoula. A complaint had been made to the city that the motion lights on the alley side of his house were in violation of the city light ordinance. The city did not clearly specify which portion of the ordinance that was violated. The document said to send an enclosed postcard to the city when the lighting conforms to the ordinance. It also said that failure or comply could result in a referral to the city attorney's office. When my friend asked his neighbors if his lights were a problem, and all of them said no, excuse me, he called the city to find out who made the complaint and what he was in violation of. He was told they could not tell him who made it, and the complaint stated that the lights were quote brighter than the sun. They were not able to tell him exactly what part of the lighting ordinance he was in violation of. Upon further contact with the city, he verified that he was sent this document without the city actually coming out and verifying that a violation occurred. When he asked the city to come out and verify the violation, he was told that they do not have the equipment to do so. He himself purchased a consumer-grade light meter and determined that he was not in violation. The lighting ordinance is complaint-driven. The person who made the complaint did not have the maturity or decency to talk to my neighbor directly. Instead, they chose to file the complaint, have the city protect their identity, and the city acted on it without verifying the validity of the complaint before sending correspondence and requiring a date deadline for compliance with legal threats as a last resort." Now what I'm here for, as you can expect.
You got a minute and a half for it?
Yep, you can call me on it. "I see that the complaint-driven background check ordinance that was voided by the Attorney General is now back in the news in the courts. Let's say the ordinance goes into effect. Will someone who calls in a complaint that they suspect an illegal transfer is taking place, will they have to sign a report? Can they make an anonymous 911 call? Will that person remain anonymous and their identity protected by the city? How do you envision a police response to this type of complaint? What protections does the city plan to afford a citizen who is falsely accused of a misdemeanor firearms crime? In seeing how the lighting ordinance complaint was handled, I wondered the following: Can someone simply and anonymously call 911 and say they believe an illegal firearms transfer is taking place and abuse the system for a personal vendetta? If a false report is filed, will police and courts enforce Montana Code's annotated 45-7-205?" And I only have three minutes, so please look that up. "In February, you guys might remember, I came to public comment to talk to you about a string of package thefts that were, where the thief was caught on video and then caught by law enforcement the next video, the next day, wearing the same clothes with the same car full of the stolen items. That occurred November 21 last year. I have yet to receive my goods back and have been told they will be held in evidence until he goes to trial. That trial is tentatively scheduled for June 7 this year. I was told to expect a rescheduling for a later date. I've also been told by a senior member of the Police Department that we have quote 'decriminalized misdemeanor theft.' The thief will see no jail time because the amount stolen was not over fifteen hundred dollars, and that each of the four thefts, they're treated separately, that the total value of all the items will not be combined to reach that threshold. They said the system's broken. If our courts are so backed up that it takes more than six months to send to trial someone who was filmed committing a crime and caught red-handed the next day, what real-world expectations do you have for the effectiveness and efficiency of the gun ordinance? While you have noble ideas, I'd rather see the city resource expenditures of time and money used for the direct benefit of its constituents, rather than engage in creating new complaint-driven and unenforceable laws with what could be disastrous unintended consequences. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Hey, Mark, would you, would you email me the name of the person we sent the letter to? I want to look into that a little more.
I didn't send the letter.
I'm sorry?
So who got the letter?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. Additional public comment this evening?
Candy Matthew Jenkins, 1211 Cooper Street. Summary: The legal right to vote. "A Mrs. Powell of Philadelphia asked Benjamin Franklin, 'Well, doctor, what do, what have we got, a republic or a monarchy?' Without hesitation whatsoever, Franklin responded, 'A republic if you can keep it.' The United States Constitution guarantees a republic in form of government with representatives elected throughout the net democratic process of one man, one vote. The right to vote is not limited to the election of representatives and can bring, bring to the voters a question asking for general input of their fellow voters, questioning the actions of their public officials on any particular proposed actions, or for that matter, past actions if they are so led. In the olden days, it was normal for the people to publicly censure public official, officials if they believed they had crossed the line and abused their granted authority. I don't think the framers of our country would have believed they would have to fight City Hall to exercise their, their call for a referendum on an issue of public concern, especially any issue that involves expenditures of vast amounts of taxpayer money, vast sums of taxpayers' money. To call, the right to call for a direct vote of the entire electorate is a right that should not be abrogated by, by the very public officials whose actions are questioned. The Missoula Charter right to initiative and a referee, referendum and recall, in accordance with the Montana constitutions and the laws of the state of Montana, the electors of Missoula may exercise the powers of initiative and referendum. The Missoula Council, City Council's, City Council uses their right to put, put forth scads of resolutions most citizens aren't fully informed about. And referendums for general vote by the electorate, electorate on a single political question hardly ever has been referred to them for a direct decision on which they get to vote on. And they all, and they do it in all our names, whether all of us agree or not. In Missoula, the, our elected officials use polls instead of votes of general citizens to do their business behind closed doors avoiding transparency. The water company raising our taxes destroy our Missoula history for a better business deal. And now this lawsuit to pervert, pervert the Attorney General's decision to avoid excessive firearms background checks to the tune of a $25,000 lawsuit against the state AG. It doesn't matter if this expense does not require our vote or City Council, because it's our tax money. At forty-four hundred dollars in taxes, I for one say I want a vote to support my constitutional right to keep and bear arms above the city's unconstitutional right to stop me. But as we now realize, today, Missoula, Missoula's government is run by an oligarchy which has no respect for the governed besides their control of every aspect of Missoulian's lives, down to getting rid of elephants. Is that a stab at the Republicans?
We're out to about six minutes, Ms. Matthew Jenkins.
Six minutes? Okay, certainly sounds like a psychopolitical operation to me. And I just would say, everything that backs our sovereignty and our right to put these things to a vote is, are being violated. And I'll close with Ben Franklin. "Only a virtuous people are capable of freedom. As nations become more corrupt and vicious, they have no, have more need of masters. Rebellion to tyrants is obedience to God," and I agree with that statement.
Any other general public comment this evening?
About more. "I'm going to pay attention to streets and roads, Missoula mayor says after city survey. I guess I'd ask the question of, what have you been doing for the past 12 years, or whatever it's been that you've been mayor? I know what you haven't been doing. I don't know what you have been doing. There's an article here on Missoula City Leaders' Eye Tourism Tax as Municipal Needs Grow. Relief for Property Owners." I really couldn't believe what I was reading, and I'm assuming whoever wrote this was, that this is a fair representation of what was said or what the person thought. Nearly 65% of Missoula residents polled in the survey said they supported a 3% tourism tax so long as the revenue resulted in a decrease in property taxes. So that very clearly says to me that we're going to try to get it passed by promising lower property taxes. But what is the real reason going to be? A City Council person wrote this, or said this. "The federal and state level, all these social safety net programs we've relied on to take care of most, the most vulnerable in our communities, has been passed on to our local communities," says City Council Member Heather Harp. "We don't have the funding to take care of them. This is what this type of local option sales tax would allow us to do. Now, are we going to take care of a lot more services, or are we going to lower the property taxes? Can't do both. At least, I guess you can't do both. We've been giving away Montana for free to everyone who comes here as a tourist, and it's time we stopped doing that." If I read it correctly, there's a 7% tax on hotel rooms here, and a 3% tax on, on food in restaurants. However, a better solution is to terminate the MRA, Missoula Redevelopment Agency. Stop all activity of the MRA so that we don't have to give tens and tens of millions of dollars to shopping centers, $3 million to a hotel, $50,000 to a dentist in town, and $50,000 to Starbucks, and on, and on, and on. That would be a better way to pay for things, is to not give it to people as a handout. Thank you."
Any other general public comment this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Items on that agenda were approved unanimously in standing committees. Save a little time on Monday evenings by considering these items all at once. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and will take comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks. I think while people are still here, I want to correct something on the committee schedule. The meeting of Committee of the Whole on the 23rd of April, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, is being held at the Stockman Bank Conference Room, Boardroom at 321 West Broadway, not here in City Council Chambers. So, just wanted to correct that while folks are still here with us. Our consent agenda tonight has 11 items. The first is to approve claims in the amount of $591,952.91 for checks that are dated April 17 of 2018. Number two is to award the bid for construction services on the MoMont Number One Sewer Lift Station replacement project to Grant Creek Excavating at a cost not to exceed $251,811 and authorize the return of bid bonds. Number three is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an agreement amendment with WGM Group Incorporated for soil, soil characterization activities for the Scott Street Water Main Extension Project at a cost not to exceed sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars. That was from our Public Works meeting earlier this evening. Number four is to approve the purchase of two 2018 Ford F-250 Supercab four-wheel-drive pickup trucks from MD Loose Incorporated of Townsend, Montana, at a price of $29,366.34 each, for a total cost of $58,732.68 for both units. Number five is to approve the purchase of one 2019 Freightliner 108 SD Dump Truck from I State Truck Center of Missoula, Montana, in the amount of $110,437 and authorize the return of all the bid bonds. Number six is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Matt Ellis to the Missoula Parking Commission Board for term that begins May 1, 2018, and expires on April 30 of 2022. Number seven is to award the bid for construction services on the Gerald Avenue Water and Sewer Project to Grant Creek Excavating for an amount not to exceed $580,411 and authorize the return of bid bonds. Number eight is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with N. Computer, excuse me, N. Harris Computer Corporation for a billing software license upgrade from Missoula's water customer service and utility billing services at a cost not to exceed $353,000. Number nine is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a managed services agreement with N. Harris Computer Corporation for billing software support and maintenance services for Missoula Water at a cost not to exceed $31,500. Number 10 is to adopt a resolution of intention to close and vacate public right-of-way being the south 20 feet of West Pine Street, lying adjacent to Lot A and B and Block 46 of the WJ McCormick Edition that's located between Scott Street and Hawthorne Street, as described in Exhibit A of the resolution of intention, set up public hearing on that matter for May 7, 2018, and returning this matter to the Public Works Committee for a pre-public hearing preview. And finally, number 11 is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a collective bargaining agreement with the Development Services Planners MEA MFT Union for a four-year term.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Questions or comments from council members? Mr. Ramos?
Can we separate the question and separate item one from the rest of the agenda?
We certainly may. Ms. Harp?
And I need to recuse myself from item number three.
Ms. Merritt? Anyone in the audience care to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote on item number one.
Okay, on the claims, item number one of the consent agenda, start roll with Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra, Becerra votes yes. Kears, Kears votes yes. DeBary, DeBary votes yes. Harp, Harp votes yes. Hess, Hess votes yes. Jones, Jones votes yes. Merritt, Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no. Von Losberg, Von Losberg votes yes. And West, West votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 10 ayes, one nay, and one absent.
And we'll have a roll call vote on items two through 11, with the understanding that Ms. Harp and Ms. Merritt will abstain on item number three.
I think it's three. Item three? Yes. Okay, on items two through 10 of the consent agenda, Becerra?
Two through 11.
I'm sorry, two through 11. Number 10 kind of is off the screen because it's so long. Two through 11. Becerra votes yes. Kears, Kara votes, Kears votes yes. DeBary, DeBary votes yes. Harp, Harp votes yes with an abstention on number three. Hess, Hess votes yes. Jones, Jones votes yes. Merritt, Merritt votes yes with an abstention on item three. Ramos, Ramos votes yes. Von Losberg, Von Losberg votes yes. West, West votes yes. And Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and one absent on items four through 11, and nine ayes, two abstentions, and one absent on item number three.
And the consent agenda is approved. I am unaware of any comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, or the community forum this evening. We do have a couple of special presentations this evening. With that, Ms. Kelly, would you like to introduce the first special presentation?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jane Kelly, Neighborhood Coordinator with the Office of Neighborhoods. And each year, the Office of Neighborhoods and the Community Forum solicit nominations of individuals and groups who have made significant and positive contributions through their volunteer efforts. A committee recommends the nominees, who are then confirmed by Community Forum. Fifteen years ago, I was inspired by seeing great volunteers working tirelessly in their neighborhood councils. Working with Community Forum, we were able to create the award to honor one individual a year. We later added the group award. So what do the people, what, what do they get for their award? They have a tree planted in their honor. They have their names added to a plaque. Here's the group plaque. And we've had to have a second individual plaque, and they hang in City Hall outside the Office of Neighborhoods. A special day is named in their honor by the mayor's official proclamation, which will be coming soon. So I want to say it's very fitting to announce the recipients, as this week, April 15 through the 21st, is National Volunteer Week. And I'm happy to let you know the winners for this year, for the individual award, is Giles Teylen, and for the group award is the Grant Creek Trails Association. And now, the mayor will read the proclamation. Thank you.
These proclamations are heavier than usual. "Ladies and gentlemen, whereas the city of Missoula recognizes the significance of local volunteerism and dedicated neighborhood service, now therefore I, John Engen, Mayor of the city of Missoula and the state of Montana, hereby proclaim April 16, 2018, in Missoula, Montana, as Giles Teylen Outstanding Neighborhood Volunteer Day and Grant Creek Trails Association Incorporated Outstanding Neighborhood Volunteer Group Day, and honorably declare the month of April to be Outstanding Neighborhood Volunteer Month, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing their profound connection to place and to each other by offering their service for the betterment of their own neighborhoods in challenging and meaningful new ways during this commemorative month and beyond." Ms. Kelly failed to mention another benefit of this award is free parking downtown after 5:00 and on weekends. So you've got that going for you as well. We would welcome anyone who would care to sing the praises of any of these volunteers.
So I'm Pete Lesikah, and I'm on the leadership team for the Lower Rattlesnake Neighborhood Council. And about five And about five years ago, the city did some revamping of Van Buren through our neighborhood. And when they were done, there were some boulevards in between the sidewalks and the street. And they hired a contractor who put in some bad soil with weeds. And so we wound up with a street that was lined with weeds, and we thought that that was not what we wanted. So we got a couple of neighborhood grants, and we fixed that. And we would not have been able to do this without Giles, because Giles has a landscaping business, and he knows about this stuff. And so he helped us choose the shrubs. He helped us get a good price on the shrubs. And then he came and helped us, with his wife, put all this stuff in. And then, way above and beyond the call of duty, he hired, he paid his people to come and help us do this stuff. So that's one thing I know about. And the other thing that I know about is that for many years, he has hired his people to go up on the south end of Mount Jumbo, which is right above our neighborhood, and pull weeds for a day. So that's a lot of stuff, and it seems like it's way above what you could expect from somebody. And I hope that this award just keeps him doing it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lesikah.
Hi, Morgan Valiant, Conservation Lands Manager, City of Missoula. Came out on this cold March night from doing work out in my shop, because I know that Giles has come out a lot to help me with work up on the hillside. So it was the least I could do. I've known Giles for about 20 years. I have no idea how long you've served on committees before I met you. But when I met him, he was serving on the Mount Jumbo Advisory Committee. I joined that committee later. He served on our Conservation Lands Technical Working Group. He's currently been the Chair of our Conservation Lands Advisory Committee for a decade. I checked his attendance record. He's at 95% of meetings. He's missed 2 in all that time. That's saying a lot. Besides donating time for those boards, I was going to tell the same story about pulling weeds on Jumbo with his paid staff. That's par for the course. That happens all the time. I met Giles through the university. He was actually doing research on ecological grassland restoration up on Jumbo. He lost the money that was funding his position, and he kept doing the work. And so he has helped a ton. I think he serves as a great ambassador for both the Conservation Lands Program, Missoula Parks, and the city as a whole. So I'm very proud of him and happy that he's getting this award tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Valiant. Also happen to know that Mr. Valiant is keeping track of attendance, so...
I just wanted to let you know that I think, and a lot of people think, that Giles Tealyn is a pillar of the community. For as much as you have to hear what might be wrong with Missoula, Giles is certainly what's right with Missoula. And I'm sorry you have to hear about people's complaints about Missoula. Giles knows the power of community service and volunteerism. It's in his heart, and we are proud to call him a friend. He knows the power that community service and volunteerism, as it brings people together and creates a common purpose. He knows the power of the collaboration it causes. And he knows that it inspires people like him to think, rather than private gain, about public good. And his fingerprints are all over this city, in pocket parks and in the biggest triathlon in the state of Montana. He has put in tireless efforts in landscapes, in private landscapes, in public landscapes. He's got spaces on the university that he has put time into, and he's just a terrific asset to the city. And we're proud of him.
Thank you. That was Dean McGovern for the record. Anyone else this evening?
I'm Kim Burke. I've lived in Grant Creek for 32 years, and I wanted to say that it is a beautiful place to live, but until recently, we had to enjoy all the beauty and the open space through our windshields as we drove to town to exercise at a gym, or hike on trails in other neighborhoods, or to drive our kids to visit other kids in neighborhoods that aren't very far as a crow flies, but are separated by a dangerous road with no sidewalks. So while there was a plan for a trail in Grant Creek from at least the 1980 Grant Creek Area Plan, there wasn't the motivation or the mechanism to get it done until recently. Earlier efforts had failed for lack of expertise among the members. We had the desire, but nobody had any relevant skills, so we just sat around and bitched about not having a trail and didn't know what to do about it. But when the Neighborhood Councils formed, our Neighborhood Council did a survey of the Grant Creek residents and found out that there was overwhelming support for a trail. And so a committee was formed that eventually morphed into the nonprofit called Grant Creek Trails Association, that just happened to have the right mixture of people with trails expertise, people with grant-writing expertise, people with superior fundraising and networking abilities, at least two engineers, and a whole lot of people that were motivated to get it done. So now, Grant Creek has a trail, or at least three-quarters of a trail. We're still working on the rest of it. But the Grant Creek Trails Association is working on other connections to other trails to make our trail part of the whole network of trails that connect Frenchtown to Missoula, to Hamilton, to Bonner, and hopefully, we'll be able to jump on a bike and ride all the way down there. And I'm just glad that although it took at least 10 years, I'm still able to ride a bike now that it's done. So thank you to the City Council and the mayor for the hard work that they did to help us do the hard work that we did to get this whole thing going, and a lot of money from you guys and from our group. And thanks also to the Office of Neighborhoods that provided us with a lot of guidance and some grants for amenities to the trail that weren't covered by the engineering, like benches and mud mets, and hopefully, some trail signs, and maybe even some little public, little free libraries or something like that. We may be working on more amenities. But we're not going away. The group is still going to be active, and we hope that we'll continue to get support. And there are a couple of former Volunteers of the Year that serve on the Grant Creek Trails Association. One of them is here tonight. I think you're stepping down now, right?
Yeah, Giles Tealyn.
Okay. And Bert Lindler was Volunteer of the Year a couple of years ago, too. So I don't know if our other members want to say something, but I do appreciate all the support we've gotten for the trail.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Kevin Davis, President of the Grant Creek Trails Association. Kim did a fine job of summing up our efforts over the years, and we are very grateful for this award and recognition among several esteemed volunteers and other groups. As Kim mentioned, we've accomplished a lot, but we've got more to do. We're working to connect our neighborhood trail to the Greater Missoula Trail Network to bump it hopefully from neighborhood status to commuter status. And so we appreciate your support, and I look forward to working with you all more.
Thank you, sir. With that, I will simply express my gratitude, as I often say about volunteerism in Missoula. We couldn't do this without you, and we couldn't afford to pay you. So it works out very well. The fact that people show up again and again and give their time and money and hearts and souls to make their neighbors' lives better is testament to this community we live in. And in a world where that doesn't always happen, I'm really glad that it happens here. So thank you all for being here. Thanks, Jane. Thank you all for your hard work, and we won't ask any more of you except more of it. So thank you very much. Our second proclamation this evening, ladies and gentlemen, oh, I'm sorry, let's give you these, why don't we? As long as we have them. You want them? All right. is an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in our nation, as a victim, survivor, or as a family member, significant other, neighbor, or coworker of a victim or survivor, and whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support victims' rights, and to increase support for agencies providing services to victims or survivors. Pardon me. And whereas International Denim Day has been observed since April 1999 as a symbol of protest in response to an Italian High Court decision to overturn a rape conviction because the victim wore jeans, and whereas every year since 1999, community members, elected officials, businesses, and students have organized to make a social statement by wearing jeans as a visible means of protest against myths that surround sexual assault, and whereas Missoula is dedicated to support the Denim Day Initiative, as there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape, now therefore, I, John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana, do hereby recognize the 25th day of April 2018 as Denim Day. That's the last of our special presentations this evening. We'll move on to the public hearing portion of our Agenda State Law and our own council ruleset guidelines for inviting comment in a formal way on a variety of issues and following a staff report. The council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. Our lone public hearing this evening is on a petition to vacate a portion of Holly Street, and our staff report this evening comes from Ms. Baker.
Good evening. My name's Jenny Baker. I am with Development Services, and tonight, I am presenting a right-of-way vacation request for the south 20 feet of Holly Street, which is located in the Lower Rattlesnake. This request is being made by the current owner, Ron Fitzgerald, and he is represented by Nick Cole of NC Design Architecture. The requested right-of-way vacation is located at the intersection of Holly and Harrison Streets. It's adjacent to 1440 Harrison Street, which is comprised of the north 13.5 feet of Lot 11 and all of Lot 12, in Block 147 of the Parkside Edition. If the vacation is approved, the right-of-way would be permanently combined with Lot 12. The portion of Holly Street where the request is, is a 40-foot-wide right-of-way, and it dead-ends at the bottom of Mount Jumbo. In addition, this portion that is being requested, it's outlined in blue on that slide, contains no public infrastructure, nor are there any public utilities located in that right-of-way. The north portion is used as unpaved access for the apartment complex on the other side of the street. Staff's concern regarding this request initially was whether this could be used as access to Mount Jumbo, but Parks and Recreation has said that they do not intend to use this and that there are no plans to create an access point here in the future. The portion of Holly Street that's requested, again, is outlined in blue. It's 20 feet wide, and altogether would come out to a little over 2,000 square feet. This is the site of the March 2014 avalanche that was on the portion of Lot 11 and Lot 12. The property is currently 43.5 feet wide, and the total square footage of the lot is 4,785, which is non-conforming to the minimum lot size in this zoning district, which is R 5.4. The minimum lot size there is 5,400 square feet. The applicant proposes to vacate the south 20 feet of Holly Street, which would increase the width of the parcel to 63.5 feet, and the total square footage would then be 6,985 feet, which would then meet the zoning district requirements for minimum lot size. The applicant proposes to construct a 27.4-foot-tall house, which requires a minimum 9-foot side yard setback on the south property line and a 10-foot street-side setback on the north property line. That would limit the structure to 24.4 feet in width. The proposed 20-foot-wide vacation of Holly Street would increase the buildable area by 20 feet and allow a larger construction area, and also a greater setback from the neighboring The staff recommendation for this request is to adopt a resolution to close and vacate public right-of-way being the south 20 feet of Holly Street, lying adjacent to Lot 12, Block 147 of Parkside Edition, located at the intersection of Harrison and Holly Streets. That's my presentation. If you have questions...
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Would anyone care to speak on behalf of applicant this evening? With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this proposed vacation? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Seeing none, Mr. Debary? Oh, I'm sorry. Public words, Mr. Hess?
Thank you, Mayor Engen. I move we adopt a resolution closing and vacating the public right-of-way being the south 20 feet of Holly Street at the intersection of Harrison and Holly Streets, lying adjacent to Lot 12, Block 147 of Parkside Edition in the City of Missoula, Section 23, Township 13 North Range 19 West, Principal Meridian, Montana. And if I may speak to it?
Mr. Hess?
We had a lively discussion in the Public Works Committee about this, and I think that, my take on this is that there's no strategic value in retaining this right-of-way. I'm interested in discussing how we approach future right-of-way vacations holistically through a policy or through some other council-initiated guidance, but at this point, I see no reason to hold this up, and I'm supportive.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'm sorry, Ms. Hart?
I'm going to be voting in favor of this, and I want to just say a couple of things that this was a very, this was the same, a very tragic scene here in our community. And I have to say, I'm very appreciative to the owner to actually perhaps start healing, or start the healing process in that particular neighborhood. So hats off to you, and thank you for trying to preserve the trees, because I do believe that was something that was of consideration. Thank you.
Further discussion? All right. Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, on the resolution to close and vacate the street, let's see. Debary votes yes. Harp votes yes. Hess votes yes. Jones votes yes. Merritt votes yes. Ramos votes yes. Von Losberg votes yes. West votes yes. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra votes yes. And Kares votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That's 11 ayes and 1 absent.
And the vacation is approved. We have no additional public hearings this evening. Move on to communications from the mayor. Doc Melcher died last week. Senator Melcher was a fine public servant, sat in this very chamber once, and extolled the virtues of the Social Security program in a way that changed my thinking, even though I was always a proponent. He made me think much differently about that program and our responsibility to each other. He was also funny. When I ran for my second term as mayor, I was unopposed, happened to be in a room with Senator Melcher, and he said, "Is anybody running against you?" And I said, "No." He says, "I always ran better unopposed." We'll begin general comments from council members this evening with Mr. Von Losberg and Ms. West.
Just a friendly reminder that the Lower Rattlesnake Neighborhood General Meeting is this Thursday, April 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Missoula International School.
Mr. Hess?
I'd like to add to the appreciation of the Grant Creek Trails Association. It's an awfully inspiring group of folks, without whom there would not be the Grant Creek Trail. They've worked for, I think, well over a decade to acquire right-of-way and fundraise and work with the city. And it's just an awfully kind, dedicated, and sometimes tenacious group that has worked very hard. And they're working on winter maintenance this year. They organized an effort to plow the trail using a variety of sources of funds, which they were able to cobble together from homeowners' associations and the Trails Association, and some partnership with the Parks Department. And then, as Kevin mentioned and Kim in their remarks, they're working on extending the trail north all the way up to Snow Bowl, and south down into the other, into the rest of the trail network. So it's been a real pleasure working with the group. And Kevin, I hope you can express my appreciation for your group on to the rest of the association.
I guess we'll go back in time, Mr. Von Laasberg. Just a correction. The Lower Rattlesnake General Meeting is Wednesday evening. We have bus tour on Thursday. Anyone listening, we didn't want to confuse our constituents in Ward 1. Thank you, Ms. Becerra.
I would like to echo what Jordan just mentioned about the Grant Creek Trails Association. In my short time on council, I have seen how dedicated they are and how much work and effort they put into it. So I do appreciate it, and please pass along my congratulations to the rest of the group. Thank you.
Ms. Jones? Ms. Harp?
Kevin is the remaining person from your group here. I was just basically extolled the virtue of civic engagement, that, you know, I think we sit here, and we do get to hear a lot of negativity, but at the same time, we sit here because we know there's this positive energy that just is resounding throughout our community. And if we could do this every single day and celebrate our volunteers, we would be a better city, trust me. So please relay our thanks to the entire group of folks. We couldn't do this without you all.
Mr. Debary? Mr. Ramos?
I just wanted to give a quick overview of the first-ever veterinarianer event this weekend. It was the first in the country. It was where we had an all-day workshop to try and help veterans start their own businesses, because we believe that the skills that they've learned in the military, the discipline, the strength, the ability to keep going and going makes for great entrepreneurs. And we actually had the highest-ranking military member ever elected to Congress there, Jack Bergman from Wisconsin. He was a three-star Marine general before he was elected in 2016. And then we also had arguably the best entrepreneur in Congress, our very own Congressman, Congressman Greg Gianforte. And I've obviously heard him talk about politics a lot, but this was the first time I heard him talk about his entrepreneurial background, and he really has a fascinating story. He and his wife started their business with $5,000 in their basement in Bozeman in their mid-30s, and grew it to 800 employees, and sold to Oracle for $2 billion. And just kind of what he taught the veterans was that, "Don't let anybody get you down. There's ways to start a business with no money." And he's offering to give away his book to anybody that's a resident in Montana. It's called Bootstrapping Your Business, and I think that everybody should pick that up. And I'd like to encourage veterans to start their own businesses and exercise that right to economic freedom that they fought so hard for. So that's it.
Ms. Armstrong? Ms. Merritt?
I would just like to note that the Russell Street construction is moving along, for better or for worse. They, I think of note to folks is that they now have the Milwaukee Trail closed off between Catlin and Prince Street while they do the, while they work on the underpass. They're rerouting traffic from the trail to a crosswalk that they have set up at Wyoming. And it also has caused the bus stop to be relocated either to Wyoming or down a block to First Street. So all of those things are still available, but it looks a little messy right now.
Ms. Kares?
I wanted to share about two community events that are happening this week to just boost the awareness of them. One, today through Friday, is Indian Law Week 2018, and there are events happening each day. The theme of this year's Indian Law Week is tribal treaties, rights, culture, and sovereignty, oh, man, I shouldn't have even tried, in modern society. And then, the other thing that's happening that I wanted to boost is April 20th and 21st is the 50th Annual Kiyo Celebration Powwow. It's like the largest student-run powwow in the country, and an economic driver in our community, and a good cultural opportunity, and it's not very much money. Details on both Indian Law Week and the Kiyo Powwow can be found online. Thanks.
We have no committee reports this evening. We have no items of new business. Are there any additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous communications, reports, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none, we will be adjourned, and I thank you for your service.